We knew that someday that when we have a disaster or natural disaster or any kind of unexpected events in our lives. That's why working from remotely, remote office has been always part of our plan. And that's why something like this happened, it just does not sort us off. We usually continue to work like we function like in an office or a client environment, okay? All right, so far so good. I apologize those of you that link I sent link unfortunately it didn't work. I'm gonna do that again before I start. That way we can take our time and continue to build our shopping cart. Alright, so I'm going to modify this. What is the edit, the edit button unfortunately, yeah, right here. We're gonna grab this. Boom. And now I can get out very easily. Okay, good. So. I have a couple mouses here, I don't know which one I'm gonna be using here. Excellent. Alright guys, so now we can go ahead, continue working, our working process. One second, I got kicked out. A session just kicked me out, okay? Now, what I'm gonna do is open up my index that PHP and let's, let's take a look at it, see what, what we did last time and where we left off. By looking at the code. Looks like we had this session. We are using the product that PHP. And. Alright, so I just wanna, for your information, I just wanna let you know that in this work session, I'm not too much putting on, I'm not putting too much emphasis on the security at the moment. So I'm not using the like any kind of like a filter or functionality to prevent the SQL injections at the moment, just wanna let you know out there. Or any kind of a prepared statement for MySQL database, so, or for my SQL statements, okay? So as you can see, that's why everything is poor, because my intention is not so much, I will, but I will have a separate tutorial, video tutorial for security. How to secure your, your SQL, how to secure your run end, your backend, your API, all that stuff. So we'll talk about security in other some sessions. So this first part of the hour session right now is kind of a catching up with what we did last time. It's kind of reminding ourselves to catch up with the process so, so far. So let me just bring it up. Okay, so this is, these are the list of items that's coming from my database, let me show you that. This is coming from local host. I believe I use this by IT education that US. Okay? And products table is right here. And these are the products table, okay? And let me see, so the item number one is MacBook Pro. Which is right here and then $1,000 and there are five of them. Let's change the price, price. They say drop. What I like to do is sometimes there are some items out there that merchants, like they usually decrease the price, they drop the price for many reasons. It could be because of promotion, it could be because of they're not able to sell them in time to fashion. Because of the, or some type of a marketing plan campaign. So, or maybe there's something going on with coupons, something like that, it could be any reason. So, so what we need to do is we need to create another column in the product table as far as like the drop price. Okay, so original price and drop price. So. Let's do that and then what's gonna happen in the product price? Then we have to say, hey, this is a, we have to put the original price and I'm gonna cross it out. And then we gotta put the decreased price, the current price right now, and then we have to put some type of sticker on it and say you're saving 10%, 25% if there is like a saving, okay? So let's continue. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna alter my table, it's called products table. Yeah, I can do a couple ways, either I can use my command or this, but easiest way, all we gotta do, just click on a structure. And then right here, you can just duplicate the field. And you can just say price drop. Price drop. Now, price drop, you did, you can calculate by percentage. Or the price itself. So. If we're using the calculation. Let's say that this is a price drop and for the $1,000 one, let's say I'm dropping let's say 10%, okay, 10% and everything else null. Now for the null, usually price drop zero, 0%, right? 0% by default, it basically means nothing there. Now what I'm gonna do is price drop, so I'm gonna come back here, I will just say update. And then we say products set price drop. And then equal to zero, all of them, on all of them. So because if you see is nothing here, all null, so what I did was I replaced them with zero. Now I can just easily add 10% here. Okay, but going forward, anytime I create a new one by default, I don't have to do that because by default it adds zero, 0%. So that means any, any new item going forward, we create, it adds 0%. Okay, now let's continue, let's say MacBook Pro is a price drop 10% and let's calculate that. We're gonna come back to our so index that PHP, that's where we are this way. Now, there are two ways of doing this. One, you can directly calculate this in your SQL statement. So let's, let me show you, see if we can do that on, by using this SQL, which is a structured query language. The first thing I wanna do, delete all that, so select, select from product. So let's bring them all and only thing I'm interested right now is ID of the product. Price of the product and the price drop. That's all for now, I don't care about everything else, okay? So now what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna see if I can create a, a simple mathematics, like basic algorithm or something like that. So it's just kind of a, hey, how do I calculate the percentage of stuff? Now, let's make that a little bit better, okay, nice. So in this case. I'm gonna call this SP, as means as alias, so I created an alias called P for products. Because it, it's easy for me, basically, if I do that, in case if you want to join multiple tables, alias comes very handy for multiple reasons. For example, you might end up having tables with the long name. And you don't want to write every time like long underscore name, the some column name, you can just say long name as LN, long name. Or L, or whatever, just a short boom boom, it's efficiency, it's actually, it's good for, for you when it comes to writing complicated SQL queries. In my case, I didn't have to, but I just wanted to show you guys that you can do this way too. Now. Let's calculate. So let's say if I want to well, let me just go back since I'm working on the one table, so we all know that this is a product, so I don't have to do that. At least now you know that's possibility. Now let's say if I want to great, create price, okay, and then I'm gonna multiply it to price drop. Drop and then we're gonna, what? We're gonna divide to 100 and then let's go ahead and calculate that. Okay, and then we can save this as as a discount. Okay, let's see if that's gonna happen. And if I go ahead, refresh. So as you can see. The discount of 10% is $100, so if I go ahead, change this to 1.3. Let's say 13.6, I'm, I just wanna mix it up, okay? As you can see automatically, it is calculating. See that, auto. What about the 3% of 300, that's $9, that's pretty good. And yeah, that's how it is, okay? So as you can see, we are calculating the discount. Now you might say, okay, so what about the ultimate price, right? Which is the final price, then I'm gonna come back here. Unfortunately, my SQL version I have installed 5.5 does not support this. If I say discount minus, actually it's the other way around, so you're gonna it's actually a discount from the price. Discount, right? It doesn't, but I just wanna, I still wanna show you why. The price minus discount and you can say as final price. Let's see. So it discount is not binding it, it's not, it's not been, it hasn't been declared. That's why this one is supported in the new version, which I don't have that, I only have 5.5. But after today's session, I will invest some time into upgrading my database and hopefully going forward. We will catch up with the latest, okay? Good, everything okay so far guys? Now, this doesn't necessarily mean that I don't have any options. Unfortunately, only thing I can do is by copying these guys, I know it's a lot of code, but at least we have some options, okay? Now what I can do, I can grab these, I can say price minus, and then this would be the final. Now as you can see, final price is $900. So. Price thousand, price drop 10%, it shows the discount and then the final price $900. And then we're gonna be putting this hundred dollars as a sticker, it's basically like, hey, take a look at it, this has a price drop. And then people will be like, oh my God, this is a great option, I wanna say money, you know? Okay, so that's one of the options. And definitely, I'm gonna be adding those back, let's go add everything else, okay? And as you can see, those ones, the additional ones I added, since I put the wildcard, you guys know already by now that what the wildcard is, right? So. Alright, we'll just leave it the way it is. And then all I can do is grab this guy. Go back to my products table. And then I will just have to put them right in here. See that? And then I'll put the where clause, we say product, I believe is a, let me just check it. Was that a quantity, yes? So quantity. Wanted to greater than zero. Oops, sorry, I put two, two columns, alright, so which basically means, as you can see, is the quantity. I don't want to bring up any items. I don't wanna bring up any items. We don't have it, so any items quantity equals zero, which we don't have, alright? Okay, so that's why I don't wanna bring it up. And that's basically it. Now if I refresh, if everything goes successfully. Okay, everything went just fine, all I have to do is now I have to put the discount, which is discount kind of a sticker or someone typing, can you put it on mute please? I'll let you know question. Okay, so let's say I wanna alright guys, give me a second. Everybody can hear me, okay, right? Alright, so what I'm looking for is some type of discount. Let's see. Label, make sure it's kind of an empty, oh, there we go, maybe this one is good, works too. Maybe I can find something. Okay, so let's see, I want it with no background, which, which means it's transparent. And eventually. Maybe this looks good. Okay, so this is fine, I guess we may probably gonna use that one. So we're gonna copy image address for now. Like I said, I just wanna let you know that copying from Google or from other images against the copyrights. But for the educational purposes, I just wanna let you know that I'm using it to, to teach you. But otherwise, I want you know copying or using some other people's word, it is subject to plagiarism laws. Copyrights laws, so in case if you use it for commercial purposes or for other purposes that brings you back to revenue. You might probably getting, get yourself in a trouble with the law, so I just wanna explain it up there, okay? But for this purpose, we're just fine because this is educational live session. Okay, go to index, what I like to do is, I like to put that little, this kind of a discount sticker on those items that is being offered, some type of a discount, some type of promotional, just like what we saw on on example, okay? Waalaikum assalam, Kimbo? Alright, thanks for joining, alright, so we're gonna continue. Let's call them discount. Okay, price drop class, okay, price drop class. But that's okay. But that's what we're gonna be fixing, okay, that's fine. Now, I will do a little bit of work with the CSS. Where is my, okay, price drop right here. And I would assist it down here. We guys know already, classes are called with the dots and IDs are called with pound sign, okay? Now, we going to display this as inline blog, okay? And we're gonna have a width of, how big could it be, 100 pixel? And I wanna bring down background image. And let's see, what is my background image? Which is right here. It's like an image and let me just get the height as well, let's say 80, 80 pixel, yeah, 80. 80 pixel, I think 80 pixels is too small, but we'll find out. And then I wanna put the background size 100 by 100. And I want to background not to be. And let's find out what happened here. Okay, so this may be a little too big or something, but we're gonna find out. So what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna put a position to my price drop label as a position relative and then I guess we're gonna have to do the left, let's add a 50 pixel to the left and to top, probably we're gonna leave there for now. Okay, which is fine, this is perfectly fine. Only thing we're gonna be adding is pretty much everything is fine here, let's move the text somewhere in the center. And I wanna do the line height, since it is 100, so let's give it 80 pixel. Alright, so that puts right in there where supposed to be. And another thing we forgot is for, to adding this dollar sign to our price, anything that has a price has to be dollar sign next to it or before. So make sure that, don't forget that. Let's see, quantity. And that's it, so I refresh. Okay, so that's a dollar sign, blah, 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 all that stuff. So those little coupons or discount labels right here, they're supposed to show only for those that has a discount, right? For those that have a discount. Since we are satisfied, what we have, what we decide, are we gonna put the, the price drop or should we put the discount? I don't know, but I do have both, as you can see. I have a discount, I also have the final price. We can try both, but let's put a discount. Let's put a discount, okay? And discount would be, I'm gonna grab these and then all you gotta do, just copy one of these. And if you go back to discount right here. And you just say discount. Now pay attention, we're gonna have to round up this, some numbers here. It's gonna be like long. Not gonna look pretty, look at that. Okay, now. Do we use the price drop or do we use? Yeah, we should use the price drop, definitely. I don't wanna use the discount, I wanna use the price drop, so that way price drop. Okay, so and we shouldn't forget about the percentage next to it. Cause that's what the price drop means, right? This how long, how much price drop. Okay. I want to add the level width to our label. So I will make this 120 pixel, I think. Yeah, it's kinda looks fat, I don't know. It's too much, right, on the 10. There's eight, eight to five pixel is fine. Alright, I just need to, just a little bit room for me to display my numbers. And top. Let's add the top 10 pixel, I don't know if that's gonna help me lot. Actually, it has to be all the way around, I'm sorry, there has to be minus 10 pixel. Yeah. And the left would be 40, so we're gonna move it towards the number, there we go, or is it maybe a little bit closer? 25 perhaps, that helps, yeah, this is fine. So only thing I have to do now, add my condition and what would be my condition? Is if price drop is greater than zero, then that's the only time you will be displaying that, right? So. Now we're gonna just go in here. And this is where we're gonna be putting our conditions. Okay, so for that, we're gonna just say if I just gotta PHP, if price drop, copy this right here. Greater than zero. Okay? And then put the double colon, it, it works like a curly bracket. And then you come back here, these are PHP and if just wanna, for, for your own information, I just wanna let you know that if in the short code in PHP, you don't have to do this, you can just do you know, opening bracket right here, it's like a less than greater sign and plus the question mark, you can do that. But just remember that it might not work in all versions, especially on Windows, you might have a different versions. And the latest one like the 7.2, 2.7, 7.2, 7.3, all of them work just fine. But if you have a 7.0 or maybe perhaps older version of PHP like 5.6, this might not work. So that's why I'm putting this, just wanna make sure that it's a backward compatible, does that make sense to you guys? Now, what I did was, I put a condition, it's basically, my condition says if the price drop from the table is greater than zero, which is I only show these items and don't worry, don't worry about those zero. Because who cares about those, I only wanna show those one that have the discount offering. So let's see, yep, and that exactly is happening. So these headphones are 3, 3% off and we are definitely giving them that discount. Or at least like we're letting know that, hey, these are the items are sold cheaper price, which is 10% off, holiday price, like you know, like Christmas, New Year, whatever, or Thanksgiving. Okay, I think we're good here, everything is fine and that's what exactly I wanted to show you guys that if there is a discount, then you can add it here. Next, if I wanna add five items of these and I pay attention. The, the total number of products in my shopping cart, not shopping cart, my product table is number five, which is five. I only have five MacBook Pros, but then if you pay attention, I'm purchasing all of them. Alright, so what's gonna happen is, if I go ahead and add that. Not sure what is not working, so let me just, oh, it is working, but it's with a delay. What's gonna happen is, this is fine, now when I come back, this is my shopping cart, when I go ahead and check out. After I make the payment successfully, whether it's PayPal or credit card or whatever. What I need to do is, I need to go back and make, update the product table column, which is called quantity to zero. Alright, so for example, let's imagine that we have finished this checkout process and and that person basically bought these five, so and then we're gonna come back, I'll do that manually right now. So let's say that we don't have that anymore, we only have zero and then when I come back. It's gone, so that should be gone, or, or what I was thinking is great, sold out. Sold out label. And then we need to hand it there, so I think it's the best, that way it's kind of a showing that, oh my goodness, things are going, uh, getting sold out so fast here. So maybe kind of psychological kind of a attack maybe to people, I don't know. So maybe kind of psychological kind of a attack maybe to people. I don't know. It's almost like, oh, you know, I better buy something because they're, you know, selling stuff so fast. Okay, um. I apologize. When I'm in the zone, I forget. Uh, so those of you who just joined, thank you very much for joining. Keep watching. You want to see what I'm doing, like I said, uh, in the YouTube, uh, not YouTube, in the Facebook, in the comment section, I have a YouTube address, which is the URL for my channel. Go ahead, uh, switch to the YouTube and I'll see you there. Now. So let me add that, uh, little addition. Uh, for that, I am going to remove this quantity greater than zero. Now watch. Uh, but. I need to order these. Now, we're gonna do it like a manually. I'm gonna order by ID and the descendant order, which is the new one that's gonna come in, uh, in the beginning. Or actually, you know what? Gives me second idea. So we may want to order by price. The highest price is gonna go on top. Okay, so now the most expensive one, for some reason, is these. Now. What else I like to do is those ones, uh, those items that already sold out, uh, we'd like to put some type of a sticker somewhere. Let's say we're gonna cover this action so that they can check, check out, okay? Now, I'm gonna come back to index, which is last, the column right here, action column. Uh, line number thirty-five, which is the header. Yeah, scroll down. I'm talking about this section right here. Okay, now, here's what I'm gonna do. I want to add exactly the same, uh, condition. Right over here. And then I'm gonna just copy and paste and then. Make sure the indentation is correct. You don't have to. PHP is very, uh, comfortable, you know, loose language. It's not too strict about, uh, you know, indentations or format. It doesn't matter. Or if you really, uh. Kind of picky about your code, you can use this one as well, which PHP Storm offers, uh, of, you know, right off the box. Uh, only thing I have to do now is just say quantity. Quantity is greater than zero, then go ahead, uh, display the shopping, which is the checkout process. And then in this case. Uh, let's add the PHP else statement and then I'm gonna add my div. Class, uh, we'll just put, uh, what would they call the shopping cart? Price drop. So we're gonna call this sold out. Label. And then, uh, I can just put. You know what? I can just put, use the image. Why not? Why not, right? Uh, I don't know about you guys, but this is good too. Oh, can you see it's too small right here? A small one. It doesn't matter. Yeah, I'm gonna leave up to you guys. Whatever the image you want to use, uh, feel free, okay? So it's fine. This is fine. Copy image address. And, uh. I really don't have to use the div. Uh, would be nice from, uh, front end design perspective. Uh, that way you get the control. It looks more professional, but for now, uh, let's stick to, uh, the old fashioned way, which is just use the image. And we'll display the image right here and then I call this class, uh, sold out label. And then I'm gonna grab this and design it a little bit better. So. Uh, I will probably copy most of the stuff here that I have and then remove those things that I'll need. I really don't need this one. Uh, that one is fine. I don't need that. I don't need this. I don't need that. Position relative. I may, I may not, but let's just go without it for now and everything else is fine. Okay, and now let's go. Refresh. You'll see that everything is gonna be showing up right now. Most of like the zero ones. Okay, there we go. So now we know that this is sold out. Uh, anything else sold out? No, but it's artificially create one. Now. Here are a couple of things. If you are mentioning the height or width, you don't, if you want to, one of them is should be enough and, uh, automatically adjust. Because you don't want to compress your image and it's gonna look kind of awful, right? You don't want to do that. What you do is, if you give a fixed value, border width and height will adjust it automatically. Then you don't have to mention unless you really want to put it into certain format. Alright, this is too big for me. Uh, I want to decrease the size of the image just a little bit, uh, so that. My table looks kind of out of whack. Yeah, hundred probably good. So. What was that before? Hmm, hundred pixel, right? Let me see. Um, what is second? What in my, my table IMG? My table IMG. Oh, wait a second. Uh, this is what's going on here. My table IMG. Do I have that? My table IMG? Got it. So what is basically happening? Is. Sold out. Okay, got you. So what it, but basically means is we have to override it with a couple of ways. Uh, because in the table level, which is a TD level, as you can see, I have these, uh, my table IMG, which is by table. Uh, you know, in the, in the development, especially in front end, there's a hierarchy. It's like a parent and children relationship. In a parent level, uh, I set the width hundred fifty, uh, fixed value, which is hundred fifty pixel width. And, uh, in a child level, I'm trying to override it basically, hey, saying like, I'm your father, uh, you have to listen to me. But, uh, in the development world, cha- a child has a right to override father's, uh, value, which is by important. And that's what is going on here. Uh, it's just basically, uh, you're taking, uh, and emphasis and putting on child with. Uh, putting that emphasis or focus on that particular, uh, child, which is with, okay? And that's what's happening. Uh, let me just, just, uh, YouTube here. Alright, I'm getting requests. John, I could Thomas, which, uh, the, which, uh, so, uh, what, uh, did you have to? You get that? Who English, uh, which, uh, the, uh, the, uh, last, the, uh, last, the, uh, program, how to, uh, uh, the, uh, English, uh, the, uh, again, how much, uh, uh.
Those ones that I can purchase right now. Okay, okay. So let's go back to the shopping cart now. So far it makes sense, right? Now, in here, what we did so far, open up the checkout. And let's see. I'm going to say reset. What reset does is basically it cleans out, it resets and sends you back to, uh, you know, front page, which is the shopping page. So that you can continue to shop. Okay, click on, let's add this $1,200 iPhone 11 Max Pro. You know, sometimes I'm not sure if it's something with the click or let me just double check on that. See, when I click it every time, you should see a call to backend, which is I'm using the API. See, I'm, uh, so give me, give me a second. I'm gonna go ahead and refresh it. And let's go back to reset everything. And I'll show you that call, okay? All right, are you ready? Just keep your eyes in here and XHR. And you should see a call coming in very shortly as soon as I click on that button. Okay. There we go. There's one right here. If you click, it says zero. Okay, so all right, so we have to do some adjustments. I know what is going on here. So let's go ahead and start over. Click again. Uh, open it up. And now it added one. So if you click on that, you see one. So if I add one more, then you should see another one. You should see two. It basically keeps track of those items that you added. Now go back. Uh, unfortunately, I only have one here, so unless I refresh it. It did not work for me. That's what we're going to be fixing. So let's go back again. Uh, add, add, add maybe three times. Not good. Go back. And we're going to go back to the backend and find out what we are doing. All right. So get the products at the card. All right, so let me go back to a shopping cart and see what we have here. All right, so these are the ones we added. So I'm going to empty out my shopping cart. So we're going to use a truncate. Uh, you guys know the truncate already, right? What's the difference between truncate and delete? You guys know that truncate basically removes the value content and resets the index in the, uh, the, what's the name? Increment ID numbers back to zero. And the delete only does the deleted content. Okay, so let's say that I want to click on. Let's go on refresh. Click, click. Oh, hang on a second. Click, click. When I go back to my database. Refresh. Now pay attention. I'm only adding one. The quantity is not changing. So let me go back again. So if I add the same item. It's a fish. It's a fish. And I'm going to go back to for a minute. So let's add one days. And that you know. Okay, and if I go back and see the result, all right, that worked. Now, if I want to add the same item. Well, we added too fast. All right, see, quantity is not being updated. But when I come back, neither is my checkout page. This is supposed to be changing to, uh, uh, I'm supposed to update my product quantity. So let's find out and troubleshoot why. Okay, so this is our construct. In the construct, we're establishing the database, as you can see. And we are generating our shopping cart quantity. Uh, it's the total of items in our shopping cart. And then we are getting this product details and then adding to card. Let's see what the adding part is going on here. And yes, that's what's supposed to happen. It is basically, we are updating the quantity by product. So why it is not happening? We have somewhere a condition. Somewhere we have a condition. Okay. See, as a developer, you have to be prepared. You don't always develop a new stuff. Most of the time, you are busy troubleshooting, troubleshooting errors, troubleshooting problems, issues, brainstorming, uh, working on the maintenance, working on upgrades. So you don't always develop stuff. If you have a misconception about the, uh, being a developer or the role of a developer, I just want to let you know that you don't always develop stuff. Most of, most of the time, you might be busy just working with the old legacy code or maybe the code somebody already left before you. So, all right, or in this case, uh, you develop a little bit and most of the time you'll be busy with troubleshooting stuff. Which is fine, that's, we, we have to do it, right? That's part of our responsibility. Now, what I am doing is I am troubleshooting is this portion right here. So that means when I call the backend, which is right there, uh, all I want to do is I want to spit out. Uh, I want to spit out the sequel. And let's exit out. I can just put the word up, which is fine. So that you guys know that born number is your, is your best friend. Now, when I come back, I will make sure my, open up my inspect element. Uh, this call. Now, when I come back and click on it, I need to see what am I getting back? So I'm getting the shopping. Oh, wait a second. Quantity equal one. That's what keeps setting up. I got you. That's one of the, uh, kind of a ways to troubleshoot things because as you can see, my quantity is, is one. Hmm. We don't want to do that. So then you're going to say, oh, I see now the word. Yep, that's me. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to grab this. It'll work now, I got it. I got it. And refresh it. Let's go back. Truncate the shopping table, the shopping cart table. And if it's one more time, and when I come back to here, reset. Now watch, if I add one and if I add three of them, okay, and if I add five of them, see nine item. Then when I come back, voila, now that was, yeah. Okay, so that's what's going on right now. I will get to it in a minute. So, um, those of you on Facebook, like I said, um, who just joined recently, go ahead, log into YouTube. Guys, YouTube, I might not see some of your questions. I apologize, but everything's happening on YouTube, guys. So on Facebook, this is something, uh, just showing you guys, okay? Uh, Ulam John Omar of he asked question. Assalamualaikum, organist, C sharp, Yoki Python. Uh, I did it universal. Uh, Ulam John, Ulam John. My class is the, uh, is like a man. C sharp day. He Python day, master, master heart. Uh, he class name, who's in the function, who's in order. Uh, C sharp, yeah, who's here, she's a master. She's the woman in bar, Zayn's woman in bar. And I guess it's hard to, someone have a hard to get trend boy, she brought a game, who's saying is Python, uh, who had an English. Python, how the market, they, yeah, they, it's the master, I did it. Who demand that you're in, who is so hello, actually, get you may get my Python, you're the world. Okay. Python, 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 who is the, data mining, artificial intelligence, half of, uh, my level of interest. That's all right. Uh, he is, uh, he is people, uh, who have programming language, but website, they're not a good guy. I thought website, yeah, for a while, the, the boss, the man, the general scripting language. And the best of them, I should, okay? So, uh, since all the, yeah, job, who's he, Python, yeah, sure. I got. John, hold on. But I'm happy, but you can, you can, I said, no, I'm a good, okay? Well, the service, the board, um, bull, the, I'm a, I'm a, yeah. Waalaikum assalamu waalaikum assalamu. Yeah. The school, uh, the, uh, Salam, Sunde, huh?
This one is very popular with the working with WordPress plugin. This is uh, it's easy and it's not cheap, it's not be uh free. Um, 3D card, there's another one, uh, let's see. Let's look at the couple ones. Couple in other ones here. I'm just very surprised that I'm not seeing a whole lot of uh people here, but anyhow. Uh, yeah, most like the PayPal, I think because I have a PayPal account, uh, I can log in easily, do that. So, let's go ahead, click on the checkout now. And let's get that working, we said it's working, checkout. Now, uh, before I do that, when we check out, one thing I wanna go ahead, establish right now is the mailing process, uh, let's go ahead and do that. Uh, for that, I'm gonna come back. Where is my backend? Uh, and then, database, empty shopping cart, which good, so now I'm gonna do is I'm gonna create this. Let's just copy and paste. And then we'll call this uh No, 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 shipping, mailing, or what do we, you guys wanna call it, like mail maybe? Mailing. That would be fine. Let's just call mail. Alright, let's stay uh With the mail, and then I'm gonna come back to say mail. Uh, I'll just grab and delete everything else. Wanting the database, maybe yes, uh, what else do I need? I do need uh require once, and uh One thing I wanna bring over is the uh, the mymail.php and then put it into backend. Okay, and then all I have to do is just say mymail.php. Now What I wanna do, I wanna say protected, oh, let's go with private now this time. Uh, you know what? I'll go with Mail. There, okay, and then I'm gonna say the uh mail, oh, sorry. This, sometimes I forget that I'm in the class. Myit.edu right here. Okay, very good. Use my it.edu. Um Let's go ahead, test it now, uh, for now, I will just put on Tashmattov at yahoo.com. Uh, here, I'm gonna put the subject is like uh Your invoice or checkout items. Okay. Uh, let me just check. What we are expecting here, so something kind of like that mail. Grab these. Okay, so we are adding the message as well, so this one is going to be Thank you for shopping. Shopping at, let's say myit.edu uh online. So Okay, and yeah. And then um, I will come back here. Object, it will new uh mail. And then right here, I'll just say um object. Mail, so what I wanna do, I will uh create a public function and send email right here. I don't wanna automatically fire up the email uh function. Because that's not a good idea. Okay, it's right here. Uh, only time I'm gonna fire up the email function is when I call this uh public method called send email. Does that make sense? Uh, or I can just customize this, uh, I can just say two, I can just say subject. I can just say message, I can just say message like that, and then I can copy all of that. Dollar sign two, dollar sign subject, dollar sign MSG. Um Then I can just copy it right here. So, John Tashmattov. You know what? Why not just copy this, why am I doing? What am I doing? All I have to do is this, this. Right? There we go. Uh, that's it, so let me go ahead, taste, test this, see if this is working, how it works, because uh unless there's some other problems. Uh, might not cost us our time. Okay. When I come back to checkout. I'm gonna hook it up to uh checkout for now, just for testing. And what do you just wanna do at the time, okay? Go to the checkout. And scroll down and find our script, okay, good, and Then we're gonna have to give some ID For our checkout, where is the checkout, which is right over here. Checkout shopping cart right here. Then, we do have the in here. Let's close this guy. Uh, I just put it here. I'm gonna copy this guy. And if you open it up, make sure you want to uh checkout instead of Check out. I'm sure you want to check out, right, and then uh, we are going to be firing up Uh, who is that mail? That mail. Mail. And I wanna make sure that I am sending something back to the front end, so we can just say uh, mail. Email has been sent successfully or sent whatever, we don't know the error message yet, but we'll find out. Checkout. And Shopping cart. So, in this case, I will be updating this guy right here. And then, you can say something like uh User has been updated in the email. Okay, it's time to test. Okay. Um, you know what, what else I wanna do is, I wanna just put the console here. And uh, let's show what we are getting back. And this is it. Refresh this guy. Expect element. And I go to console. And we're gonna test our mail, so I hope, I mean, fingers crossed, sometimes it might not, it may, but not, okay? But, either way, we will fix that, so quick. Are you sure you want to? Okay, it says that require vendor auto load failed to open, not such file directory. I kinda thought It didn't matter, but Let me see if we can create Simulation here. What is basically complaining about is uh unable to connect these uh to files. Um And that's what's happening right now, is um The checkout, uh, I'm sorry, the mail.php, mymail.php is trying to connect to that. And it's causing a problem because we moved the file from where it was to somewhere else besides Uh, look at this. And I call this my mail. So let me change that as well. And that's what's called troubleshooting, guys. So, myit.edu mail. Hopefully this will match the class, there we go, that becomes nicely adjusted. And next thing I wanna do is Hmm, I will change that as well. There we go. And this is also gonna change. So, let's say myit.edu. There we go. Myit.edu. We fixed the one problem, but it's not completely fixed yet, all of them. Okay, the problem still exists, which is uh trying to reference those two files In myit.edu right here. Now, in order to connect back to the win- vendor, and let's see the vendor is right here, so I am inside of a tutorials. Oh boy, so I have to jump like so many times, or I can just mention the The root right here, so see if that's gonna work. Uh, hopefully As well, otherwise, I'm gonna have to like dot dot slash, dot dot slash, you know? It's not very pleasant, but we have to do it. Not a chance. Let's figure it out. We're trying to get the auto load, right? Okay, that is what it is. Dot dot slash, dot dot slash, dot dot slash, and if I do the vendor, yes, and then if I do the auto load, yes, at least we got something. Now, do the same thing with the database. So, dot dot slash, dot dot slash, dot dot slash, in, yes, and database, yes. I hope this will fix the problem, if not, I don't know, but uh we'll put that on our uh to-do list. We may not have enough time to troubleshoot all that. And you gotta expect that some like that happens. Okay, so, which is good, that is a very promising uh error, I've never been glad to see something like this. So that, that means sometimes some errors better than other errors, okay? Some errors like you don't wanna see, and some errors like, oh, I'm glad, I see something different error. You never see any developer seeing error like being happy, you know what I'm saying? So, that counts with the passion. So, what, it basically means Hey, what are you doing, John, you already declared, or you already uh called this database twice. You already called it somewhere, and then now you're calling again? How dare you, right, that's what it's trying to say. Now, let me just go back to my mail and figure it out, it looks like that I'm calling here. Is that what's happening? So let me close it, sometimes it can be very, very frustrating. Alright, so right here, so what are you doing here? You shouldn't be calling, because you already have that. Let's forget about this. Completely forget about this. Alright, uh, that's good, now I'm gonna come back, refresh it. And, let's try, click. And not declare, where is the problem coming from? Checkout ninety-six. Checkout night, oh, right over here, checkout ninety-six. And the checkout ninety-six coming from what, shopping cart? Got it, so That is happening. Mail. It's in my mail. I need to go tutorial, then I need to get rid of this database thing. And that's not, oh my goodness, that is a problem, because what it's trying to do is It's connecting to the database. And Yeah, that will be problem, guys. That will be problem. Yeah. Cannot declare the class database, because the name is already used, database five Ninety-six, checkout ninety-six. Okay, that's uh, that's the case. There's one I'm gonna do. Since we have the production uh database kind of a conflict. This may probably gonna be taking a little longer, so I'll probably look into it uh until next our study session, uh, we're kind of running out of time for now. But overall, I wanted to kind of uh reach out all of you uh with the message. As you can see, um Now, you see what developers, what software engineers we do Uh, uh, on a daily basis, uh, so Now, let me take a few minutes of my time and answer uh Very generally, most frequently asked questions. A lot of you out there, either you are familiar with the IT world, uh, a lot of you out there might not, and some of you Very interested in getting into IT, trying to switch your career. And you, you know, you, you've been aware of what has been happening to the world As far as like uh Ability to be a mobile, uh, the ability to work from uh remote locations, and not necessarily going to work in office, right? Uh, so one of the advantages that IT is offering is that it's a, is working from a remote office or from home. So, anywhere, you have access to internet. Now That certainly, it's a privilege, but at the same time, it requires or brings lots of responsibilities. Uh, disadvantage of working from home, I like to say that uh Because I don't want you to think of that, like, hey, working from home is always the fun thing, or you know, you can do whatever you want and stuff, but Unfortunately, uh, the expectations is gonna be higher when you work from home. Because clients and the boss and everyone else, project managers, they expect a little bit more uh off of you. A little more productivity than when you were in office. Okay, why? Because first of all, you are decreasing the, the time of the, for, for the commute in the morning and going back. So, let's say like, I personally, when I was working in Manhattan. I was, my commute was basically An hour and a half to two hours in the morning. And coming back usually about an and a half, an hour and a half, maybe two hours, so that's, we're looking at the four hours Every single day, four hours, okay? And that, on top of the eight to nine hours, depending sometimes, maybe nine, nine hours some days, so nine hours plus four. Now do your math, fifteen hours all day, now, when you work from home. Uh, you have to take that uh out of equation now. So, you see what I'm talking about? Now, they expect you not eight hours, nine hours, now you're gonna have to work a little longer. So And another disadvantage is you might not have, if you are a entry level position. If you are like a less experienced physician or specialist, you're just getting into the IT. Working from home in the beginning, it's gonna be not very easy or fun stuff, because You don't have someone, you know, uh, sick uh, some type of health home. You can't ask around, because when you're office, you have like a coworkers, uh, you have uh You have your managers, you have your client or anyone, uh, you can just say, you know, like, hey, I'm having problem, can you help me? Can you help, you know, with this and with that? So that's no problem, but when you work from home, it's gonna be hard, unless, I know you have a channel, you have a way to get it, you know, your question answered. But in the beginning, it's gonna be uh real tough. Um, yeah, like I said, both options have uh advantages and disadvantages, okay? Now I've been asked a lot of question about which programming language uh that you should choose. Um, it depends, my question is, it depends. There are a lot of you out there uh who are Strongly interested in starting the IT career, or just wanna learn, wanna get into it eventually, right? And some of you are asking uh, number one is what programming language I need to pick up? And how long it's gonna take for me to become a hands-on? And also uh, and the, the most frequently asked question is How much I'm gonna be making uh once I got my first job, or once I get my, once, once I get my uh foot uh in the door. Uh, again, uh, all of my answers start with the, it depends. Regardless, I always start my answer with it depends. Of course, I mean, if you look at it logically, it depends on many factors, uh, like, for example, depends on company size, depends on Uh, how fast you are, how well you do in the job interviews, uh, and another thing is your negotiation skills, right? Even if you do so well in uh, in the job interview. And if you don't negotiate well on your salary, on your package, forget about it. Don't be fooled for empty promises like, hey, um, why don't you just start it, working for us, and then later after ninety days or sixty days, whatever? Uh, we're gonna give you promotions, or we're gonna give you a bonus and stuff, that's sometimes bull crap. Unless, you get it all that on the paper. On the paper, but they will, they can find some type of excuse, trust me. Uh, some companies, they, they, they basically buy into that. That agreement is always a legal agreement, unless, like I said, uh, if the company says, I, I was, when I was a hiring manager, uh I've, I've seen, I experienced firsthand. Sometimes your client and boss says, uh, they put you some, uh, put you under pressure, so hey, just hire this guy, and after three months and four months, you just gotta let him go. Or uh, we'll give you, we'll give him that twenty percent, now we're just doing ten percent. But then you, you go to the candidate, you promise them, it's like, hey, you're gonna get twenty percent. That's kind of a practices being happening uh some places. So, again, I don't wanna get distracted, going back to a real question, alright? Uh, what is this GoDaddy? Sorry about that. Sorry, I just got charged by GoDaddy two hundred twenty-one dollars, something, something way as well. Um, yes, that's what it is, guys, um We're gonna continue answering the questions, uh Uh, your answer, uh, your, your question was uh, what programming language, uh, I think, like I said, for the web. Wh- why Am I pushing this web so fast, like so, you know, I don't know, popularly? Because it's easy to learn and getting into, uh, getting the, getting your first job, that's why. So if you're trying to learn the Java, it'll take a long time, longer time. Alright, so uh PHP and Python is easiest. And remember, software development, like especially about development. It's a bit of a raw, you got a front end, you got a back end. If you wanna learn all of that, six months or years, not enough. Six months is only for one side, if you wanna become a, a very good with the front end, you have six months probably good. But if you wanna learn and front end, and the back end, and Linux, and SQL, and everything, no, the answer is no, you, you will have a basic understanding. You will have uh, you know Yeah, you might do okay in job interview, but you're not gonna rock into it. Because six months is nothing. People go for colleges, like they're getting degrees for ye- four years, four to five years. And even if after they graduate, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna get that best job. I wanna be honest to everyone out there. You're not gonna, even if you get a college degree, it doesn't necessarily mean, I can get to do one thing. I'm gonna prepare a student here at my, my education for six months. One side, let's say front end, for example, or the back end, I'm gonna pick the one uh line, right? And then, I'm gonna pick someone who recently graduated from college degree with a computer science degree. And let's do some type of a uh Competition, like a co-challenge. Let's see who's gonna win. I'm thinking about setting up this kind of event, uh, sometimes This or maybe next month, depending on the uh, how far, you know, how far this parenting, how long, like, how long it's gonna last. Okay, so that would be interesting thing to see, right? You wanna see a, a candidate Who has recently graduated from uh American university college with a computer science degree. And then someone who, which I don't have right now, but um, I'm gonna pick one, and I'm gonna prepare that, get that person. And next six months, nothing but programming, coding, boom, 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 and then we'll see. And I'll give them assignments, we're gonna give them three tasks, one database, one Linux, and we're gonna give them uh one project, mini project, let's say four hours for bubble. And let's see who's gonna win. Then I can tell you, alright, then I can tell you which one is what. Uh, that's it, now, salary wise, uh, go to salary.com or any other websites that offers you uh salary kind of a statistics. But I could tell you right now, uh, I've been getting lots of emails Uh, as a consultant, uh, entry levels, mid-levels, you can get sixty, sixty-five dollars an hour. Uh, the max they can do, if you're willing to relocate, like Boston, Massachusetts uh area, uh, what else? Uh, some other states, like outside of New York. Uh, they think, I can get you like seventy, seventy-five dollars an hour, but uh, that would be too much bargain. Uh, but, even if you get a sixty, sixty-five dollars an hour, or if you make five hundred dollars a, a day Uh, working eight to nine hours every day, and then taking the Saturday, Sunday off, I'm like, come on, do your math, that's ten thousand dollars, right? So that's not bad at all, for entry level, ten thousand a month, I think that's great though. Alright, I hope we, we accomplished uh Some good stuff today, uh, I really appreciate everyone joining, unless you guys have any questions, I will be Closing everything here, and then Let's see. Let's close it, close it all windows. Uh, yeah, guys, all of you on the Facebook, on YouTube. Uh, always pleasure to see everyone, uh, sorry if I, I was not able to uh pay attention to your questions and stuff. But feel free to reach out to us, uh, by the way, we have a Telegram uh group as well, uh, I have my assistants. Uh, my student uh, Intez was, uh, they ready to answer all of your questions, they are awesome. I'm blessed uh With, with such people, I'm surrounded with the wonderful people, uh, they are very Enthused about IT, enthused about helping out others, uh, since I am helping, and they're also helping others as well, so that's kind of a legacy we'd like to leave, okay? And I, again, um Stay safe out there, uh, all of you, if you are not following the social distancing rules, stay home rules. Again, uh, just be patient, a little bit longer. Uh, not much left, maybe three, two weeks, maybe months, even if it's like two months, it's not bad at all, just staying home, it's not a bad thing. Uh, you just have to find a hobby, again, if you're really bored, come on, join us online, like I said, that's what I'm doing, I'm working extra. Uh, for you guys, so that uh, try to keep the youth, keep the, everyone out there Uh, kind of interested in, in something other than what's going on in your house. Can be depressing, seeing people like every day, same person every day, and I, I know that, it's not First day is fine, second day is fine, but then after weeks, two weeks, three weeks, yeah. You might say, oh, John, I don't, I don't agree with you and blah blah, but yeah, trust me, give it time, some people will know in a week, some people will know, two weeks, some people will know. Someday you'll be like, oh, you're right. Alright, uh, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, God bless all of you, God bless your families and stay safe. Uh, I am uh very glad to see, again, my name is John Tashmattov. Uh, and I'm gonna be signing off, and I'll see you guys next week, remember, we're gonna continue, this is a very exciting, okay? So, thank you, and uh, with that message, I'm Signing off, okay, thank you.